Did you get your parts?
I did.
Did you get ahold of Josh?
No. I just got online. Found a place in Florida.
I, um, I talked to Josh. He says, well, I haven't heard of it. Maybe it was between calls or something. But yeah, he knew all about those parts and everything. So that's good. I feel like I'm short today.
Oh!
To be up a little bit. There we go. Got to be taller than Dave.
Yep.
You got a tower here. Okay, I feel better now. Thanks.
Check back to your golf cart thing. Tom, if you see me stumbling with this thing, don't get, and get two more seconds. I'm still learning.
I struggle myself a little bit with it, so.
All right, we're running a little late. Some of us had a meeting before. Um, we'll go ahead and get started. We're already streaming. We'll start as always with a pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is Spain, on a nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. All right, if you look through your packets, um, we'll do meeting minutes and then we're going to change, change a couple of things around here. First of all, meeting minutes. I don't know if you had a chance to look from the June ninth meeting minutes?
If nobody's seen any changes, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Dave. Second. Second by Michael in favor of I?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we're going to change things around here a little bit. Um, as you notice, we have one commissioner, one council person, sorry, who is not here. Um, Joanne is working for the city today, but she has given her letter of resignation back of July thirty first because she is got married and moved down to the county. So we'll put that in for, for public record. Next, it's not on there as well, but we are going to have adult protective services.
Thanks for having me again. Um, I just wanted to give you all a quick update on our contract. Uh, I just got off the phone with Sherri Beck, who's the Assistant APS Director, and asked her about where we're at with our contract because it's supposed to have been here and signed and enacted by July first. So currently, we're under no contract at all. She's telling me that as of right now, she has no idea when it's going to be done and be sent down. Apparently, there was some contract verbiage that was in conflict with the Attorney General's Office and the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. There is some movement on that, all she said. So there's some movement. Uh, but whenever that comes down, typically, whenever they get it, if, if the verbiage on it's okay with Dan and, uh, the county attorney, looking at probably at least thirty days or so to get it back, um, and then after that, you're looking at probably thirty, sixty days beyond that until we get the actual claim packet, which is what I put all my expenses on that I send to Patty, or copy of to Patty and to the state. So you're looking at with our expenses right now, I would say conservative estimate, two to three months. And then once I submit those expenses, it's generally two to four weeks before the check actually is cut and gets put in your account here. You can kind of do some, like, say that's, I'm shooting from the hip on that because they, they have no idea at this point even a date on when they're going to send out the contract for the prosecutors to sign. It's not just here, it's, it's the whole state program. Um, so there's that. I, I had mentioned to Tony, um, the other day that I would just kind of give just a real brief of kind of what else is going on on the APS side. We've had definitely a huge uptick in cases with COVID kind of, kind of petering out. It's, it's, like, more people are getting to the doctor, more people are getting, you know, health issues and stuff. The, currently, our, we're depend, completely dependent on services from other people. So like nursing homes, help, home healthcare, private corporations, businesses that run these services. Um, they're all shorthanded right now. Um, they're all shorthanded to the point, we're actually getting calls from their clients wanting us to investigate the home health agencies for neglect because they don't have enough staff to make all the hours. Which is insane because if we go investigate them for neglect, and then I might have to call them the next day to see if they can come in and help somewhat. And we've had quite a few that's just shut their doors. Right now, I've got one home health agency for most of Green County. And I've been on the phone with that director begging her not to shut the door because then there'll be zero. They've already closed two nursing homes up there. So, so to keep it short, I will put it to you this way. If tripled my budget, it would not make a bit of difference on the services that we have access to or can provide, make zero difference. That's how bad it is. So basically, we go out or talk to people on the phone, we give them guidance, and we have had a couple cases that we've actually got all the way through court. Um, but that's kind of where we're at. It's, it's bad. I'm not going to lie. It's, it's. Though, I, you know, as far as the county goes, um, you know, you guys have some decisions to make. I, I feel like, um, I've talked to Dan. I haven't, I think he's going to sign a contract, but I'm not sure. It's kind of, kind of depend on what's in it. Um, because there may be some terms in there that have to be worked out and rearranged, so, um, so I'm not really a hundred percent sure on where he stands on that yet, but, um. And the, and the other thing I thought about, I was being the county attorney, um, since we're not under a contract, if we're out here and something happens to one of us, or we do something that might trigger some liability incident, with us not being under contract, I don't know where that makes us fall. That's a good question.
Yes, it is.
Because right now, we're kind of hanging out in the wind.
Well, the lack of contract is, is as much of, of the unintended consequences. First unintended consequence is the fact that Davis County will be paying for everything for all the counties. So we will be footing the bill and then the account will continue to go into the negative. Correct me if I make a mistake here. And depending on what the contract is or what we get back, or what, what we would not get back by the state's contract, then Davis County is on the hook.
Correct.
So we'll be, and if somebody says you only take care of those people in Davis County, that's not legally allowed anyway.
Under, under the contract now, we, we have to do it for all.
No, so. The option is two things, and really only two things, is either to stop it and halt it. You do so, then you're laying off people, and then you're also not taking care of the people that we need to be taking care of in the first place. And the other thing is to go along with the assumption, um, that the state will in fact do it and will in fact sign it, and then we will get most, if not all, of our money back. Those are the, in, in a nutshell, that's pretty well it, isn't it?
Sherri did tell me, um, even though we may be several months out, that I would be able to do the claims back to July first. But I know last year, they had this issue pop up, but one unit didn't even get their claim packet for seven months. Though, you know, I, what I can tell you is, the way the world works in Indianapolis, you know, it's going through all kinds of different channels and offices and things, and things happen with them. They get lost sometimes. Um, you know, there's just no guarantee. Um, I did want, and I did, what I was thinking about real quick, um, the other counties I have went to, um, we've got no commitments on any funding. Um, DuBois seemed like the most likely, but then when I met with their commissioners, they wanted to limit it to maybe three or four thousand dollars that we might get. Um, I know we've got budget hearings, I don't want to get into that too much, but, um, the budget I submitted will be short. Again, it won't be as bad as last year by any stretch, but still going to be short. Um, and I've had no commitments from the other counties. Green County, I'm, I'm reassured that pretty well they're going to say no, at least from the prosecutor up there. Pike is thinking about it, but if they do, they're pretty, I'm almost a hundred percent sure certain they're going to say it's just for Pike County issues only. I've sent a lot of information to Knox, but I've not heard anything back. So that's kind of where we're at with, with that. That, that's been a project, I'm telling you. Been a project.
I would like to ask, um, if, if that's the case, I mean, we can't really keep affording to support the other counties, in my opinion.
I, I agree, Dave.
So are we, why do we need a contract with the state? Why don't we come up with a program that takes care of Davis County adult seniors?
I've thought a lot about that, Dave, and I actually think with the knowledge I have, that could be done. Um, but that's, that's going to, that's probably for another meeting and another plan. Um, and I think it would probably involve the Sheriff's Department to some degree. Um, you know, there, there's, I've, I've, even though I'm in APS, I've actually had to work around APS to get things done, so, because it's so, such a mess.
I mean, has that been a thought to try to?
That's, I think that there is a possibility of doing that. Um, the, the biggest thing is the state statute says there has to be mandatory reporting to Adult Protective Service. So if, if you had somebody, let's say, that was doing essentially APS-type duties, you could still make reports to the state. As far as filing petitions goes, the best way to do most of those, honestly, is either through an emergency detention, which the police help with, or, um, if it's going to be more of a drug-out thing, do it through the guardianship statute, which is what we try to use all the time, but we have to go around APS to do it, and essentially have a fund like the Public Defender Fund. You know, you have a fund to defend criminals, have a, a fund for guardianships and for people that couldn't afford them or.
What is the dollar amount they normally give us?
Uh, it's, normally it's two hundred thousand. Now, they bumped it up to, I think, two hundred and fifty, but they said that could only be for this year. So the next budget cycle, they might take that away because that, I think, is coming out of CARES Act money from somewhere. So we may be back to the fifty thousand short the next, and they're also, they're going to have to redo the contract with, between IPAC and the Attorney General's Office again. So that could even delay the next contract even more than this one is.
But if you went back to just Davis County, that would cut some expenses out, I would think, as well.
Yeah. Depending on what staffing levels you needed or whatever. I mean, it, that, that could be a project.
Do you think funding?
That's my thought.
I don't know if you would, but you're spending it anyway. Grant, what is the legality of them continuing to work sans can, sans contract?
Grant, Grant, I can't hear you.
Can you come up here? There are a number of issues here. A lot of them have nothing to do with Davies County. Um, we've been talking about this, this type of thing for about twelve months. Um, I talked to Dan yesterday and again this morning, and he's, he's in Indianapolis. There are issues with having expired contract, but I understand that the biggest problem to be is, is what we're doing outside of the county. Dave's suggestion makes sense, right? Under home rule, we can deal with these things pretty quickly as it relates to our county, but.
Well, that's my question. Since we don't have that contract, aren't we working towards that, you know, in, in interim, so we can have a county covered and we're not worried about the other counties since they won't fund it?
What I'd suggest is to have somebody from council, Rob, myself, and Dan speak today. Have the old contract and whatever's being proposed, and see if there is a path forward, or if it's simply a Davies County thing that, that we're going to continue forward. I mean, we're at a point where, I mean, we've been talking about this for, for quite some time, and, and it's, it's impacting us in a negative way, and I think we just need to deal with it.
I've been, I've been advocating for.
So, so as an action point, why don't we set that up? Rob, why don't you do that? And we'll have somebody from the council, Dan, somebody will start that process. Because we need to look at that.
It's a really good pro, program. I mean, it needs to be in.
The intentions, the intentions of it are fantastic. And when they, and when they did it back in the early eighties, it, it worked very well because the service provider side of things was excellent. Flip-flopped. And really, they need to update the statute. They need to update this, this whole contract mess thing. It's just, it's just crazy. Um, see, used to, when they first started this, they, when you did the contract, they, the state sent you all the money. So, just then it was just, here's your, here's your APS money, you did it through your little county process, done. And one person abused it, and so they went to this reimbursement thing, and that's, it's been a nightmare ever since. That and the other counties don't have to contribute, and they should. That, that should be changed legislatively.
So, be clear, we're going to continue another month as we are. We're going to investigate with the state if in fact we can do that, and then by the next meeting, we're going to propose what we will or won't do going forward with the state's assistance on a contract and how much Davis County would be out.
That's essentially correct. What I would ask for is, is somebody from this body that is, is willing to, to work on that with Rob, myself, and Dan, just get it addressed by, by next meeting.
You volunteer? Hey, Dave, volunteer. Good man. There you go.
That's acceptable.
Hey, Grant. Grant, while you're up there, you mentioned, Rob, you mentioned about liability without a contract in place, not in life of the county, but I think for you and your staff individually. Do we need to check with Paul Williams and see if there's some coverage the county has that would, that would cover that while we don't have a contract in place? I mean, obviously, if we make a change and we go to something without doing with the state, then obviously, at that point, we would have to add it to our.
It can't, it, it won't, it won't hurt us to do that. Um, we should have coverage, I presume. There's, there's bound to be some provision where, I mean, it's not really our problem that the state hasn't communicated like they're supposed to and gotten us the materials. Um, that's why I want to see the, the old agreement. I, I presume there's a, a tale on that of some sort, and we just need to get it, I mean, we've been talking about this, we just need to get it addressed.
I just want to be sure that we have some protection in place for the county and for Rob's and, and Rob and his staff, you know, in the, in the interim.
People working within the confines of their employment are protected now as far as the, the county itself.
Rob, um, our state representatives, legislators, they know about all this, our local ones?
I've, I've spoke to Senator Mesmer. Um, that was one positive thing that came out of me meeting with the DuBois County Council. He actually called me, which I about fell out of my seat. Uh, he seems to be interested in taking up the issue. Um, it's probably going to be a couple of years because they just finished the state budget, so, um, but I've, I've heard that before. I mean, we've worked tirelessly with IPAC. The last big legislative push through IPAC, um, resulted in a tiny bit of what we were asking for, but not, not near enough, obviously. But if, if, if enough of, of them, of them get on board, I think there might be a chance several years down the road of them maybe fixing it. It's probably going to go through something similar to what Division of Family Services went through with child, the child, child protections. Going to probably end up going through something like that eventually.
But it's, it's going to take a legislative quarterback to get the team together to,
Definitely.
to do anything, and apparently,
Yeah.
no one has been interested up till maybe Mr. Mesmer reached out to you. Is that correct statement or not?
That's, that's correct. Um, they have, um, IPAC with the, with the old state APS director did go to Governor Holcomb's office. Um, that didn't go well. She was asked to resign that day, so, um, a little bit leery of going to the governor's office. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's going to take, it's going to take some legislative action and it's going to, and I, I hate to even say this because I'll jinx it. It's going to take something, it's going to have to get enough public interest that they can't ignore it anymore. And that hopefully won't happen in my unit.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Rob.
Anything else, or, sorry, I probably ran over my time.
Yes, this.
Fine. Thanks for updating us.
Sure, you're welcome.
You and Grant and, Dave and Dan.
Next on the General Central Dispatch. This is something that we could, been on the news, been in the paper, we've all cussed, discussed. It's been going on for how many years, Mike?
A while. And after last year, my calendar kind of gets fuzzy beyond twenty twenty, you know. Yeah, it's been a while.
Right there sits a guy that was part of the first discussions, I think, on it. How long ago was that, Larry?
Yeah.
Well, I think, we've all heard the numbers, or I can read the quick paragraph that descri, if that helps, but, um, the general consensus, general consensus is to move forward to Central Dispatch for Davis County. It'll cost approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the E nine one one fund to the Central Dispatch. Sixty-five, thirty percent cost share with the county at sixty-five, the city at thirty-five percent. After the initial two hundred and fifty thousand comes out of E nine one one fund board, there will be a governance board that'll be responsible for hiring, firing of the dispatch director. The city and county will each contribute up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for startup cost. All the current staff will be eligible for employment. Uh, Central Dispatch Finance Board would be established if moved forward, would consist of the, the mayor, one county council member, one county commissioner. This is process supposed to go live at January first, twenty twenty-two for budget purposes, but we're hoping this will be done and easily by the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one. Uh, city council has approved it. The commissioners have approved it, so it lies then upon us. There will be an operational board, there'll be a finance board. Uh, council commissioners will be represented on both. Obviously, when you get to the operations board, as Gary could talk about, you've got dispatchers, you have the sheriff, you have the fire chief, you have the mayor. Gary's been involved on this with, on this committee, so we'll.
Probably since it started.
And the thing is, the, the people, it's easier to, the commissioners and council to make a decision, but the people who have been requesting this is the people who are in the trenches, and so that's.
Right. We think a team effort will make a difference in how dispatching goes. Honestly, the only people that suffer the worst is, is the citizens of Washington. Um, but I believe it'll even help our volunteer firemen get places quicker, and I think a team approach is the best way to do this. Because right now, you've got two different centers and two different buildings, and the left hand don't know what the right hand's doing.
Hey, Gary, just a little bit louder for them to hear.
A little bit louder?
Yep.
I can talk real loud. But you don't want to hear that voice today, right? So, uh, but I, I, I do think this is the way to go. We, we've discussed several different board type, uh, things on it, which we have the finance committee already, and, uh, I'm on it, Scott's on it, Tony's on it, Nathan's on it, and Murphy from the American City of Washington, he's on it as well. So then we, we were like, how big do you want this next board to be? And it can be huge, and we all know what huge boards get accomplished is zero. So, uh, you know, we'll, we'll still be working on that. I think we've got a fairly decent, uh, prospect for that board. Also, I've turned in my budget and, and I included that. I took my dispatchers out of the security center budget and made a dispatcher budget. Uh, the nine one one fund budget, apparently, we had to put names in there now, whereas we used to give the city seventy thousand and us seventy thousand. Uh, we bumped that up to two hundred and fifty thousand, just going to the county to cover that. Well, now we got to put names in there. So we've got some names in there, so it's just short, how short is it under two hundred and fifty thousand, Patty?
It's very close. It's, uh, within dollars of the.
Right, of the two hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, we should be able to use that fund better.
My question is, are you guys, the county, and the city folks all on board in doing this?
Right.
Are we there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, at every meeting I've sat in, especially with Rhodes, Rhodes being mayor, he knows the significance of it. Uh, and he knows, I mean, it was five or six years ago, we just started dispatching the fire department because it made no sense to transfer these calls. Uh, and it took us a while to get there, so there'll be some growing pains with this, but yeah, I, I believe everybody's on it.
But.
In, in emergency services.
On this committee.
Any negative, I've not heard any negative from any volunteer firemen, any EMS, city or county. I'm not saying I'm not out there, but.
On this committee, you had the sheriff, chief deputy, but we had the chief of police, fire chief. Not only do we have council here represented, you had city council, you had the head of the dispatchers. You pretty well had every operational person.
I think we got it to, I think we got it to seven, didn't we?
Yep.
I mean, we've had as many as thirteen and fifteen. Whenever you start considering, well, you need somebody from this, and Scott needs to be on it, and this person needs to be on it. Uh, it should be. I think we're down to around seven people, and I think, fine.
We can talk about the E nine one being county money at two hundred and fifty thousand, which is correct, but the citizens of Washington,
Have contributed.
are in that county, in the county, and they're paying for that as well, so.
Right.
It's easy to sit here and say it's our money, but forty-five percent of the population is here, so.
is in Washington, so. And, you know, somebody once said, city guy said, well, you know, we've got eleven thousand people, I got thirty-three thousand people. You know, it's.
So how many of their dispatchers will be coming over?
Three, I believe.
And it's my understanding they make more than the county ones, sorry.
Very much.
Does the county all go and get raises?
That's what I put in for.
Yes.
That's what I put in for.
So does that not throw the rest of the, I mean?
At budget, at budget time, Dave, I'm, I'm preparing for you. Every week, I put a little bit more together to, to get ready for you.
But they're on the same level as like jailers or,
Right.
So all of them's going to get raises.
Well.
Get up to that point.
In September.
That number, that number's five thousand dollars.
September, I'm going to present my case.
Not for all of them.
We'll see what you think.
We're not talking about jailers.
No.
And that's what he wants.
The dispatches.
That's why, I mean, I thought we got a, a raise the one other time so that everybody be on the same level.
That was all over there.
But that, that, that's still way below what the city makes.
The dispatch budget now is in Gary's budget, so it's, it's kind of convoluted, but we've tried to, Patty and I, all of us tried to go through with all that and, and break it out to actually see apples and apples. So basically, those additional people, it's five thousand dollars in additional cash going at them.
Roughly.
Roughly. What we've, what we tried to figure, looking at the, all of the people in your budget, is what they make versus what they're making there. So that's, and that's without benefits. So you can, you can tack on your thirty-two, thirty-four percent or whatever, but you're looking at five thousand dollars.
And we're already kind of attritioning a part-time position I haven't filled.
I, I just never seen any numbers anywhere. This is the first time I've seen any kind of numbers. Wasn't prepared to know what all was happening.
Well, you had a hundred and forty thousand, seventeen seventy going to E nine one one, so obviously, if you're doing two fifty, you got a hundred and ten thousand dollars more. I tried to, this was just me, I tried to do this myself, but if you look at what the budget is for this year, breaking each of those people out, and then looking what the new E nine one budget's going to be at, a million one eighty-seven, take off your two fifty, nine thirty-seven, five oh four, do your sixty-five, thirty-five percent split, then we're at six oh nine, add the extra hundred and ten thousand dollars, which is coming out of the E nine one one, you're coming up at seven hundred and nine, this was just me, seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars where you're spending six hundred and sixty-six. You're also bringing over everybody, and when attrition happens, we, we think this group, this board thinks that we, we can run efficiently once we're set up with two less dispatchers.
Right.
So when attrition happens and those two, two people retire and move on, take different positions, then we're getting closer and closer to that number being similar. But it gets down to, it's like, like the ambulance service or anything else, um, is there a cost, but how much more efficient? What I base my decision on is I talked to city people, I talked to, I talked to the city fire, uh, city fire people. One fireman, when I sat in, in his driveway, told me instances time and time again of things that had happened over the last several years where time was lost. One fireman, when I sat in, in his driveway, told me instances time and time again of things that had happened over the last several years where time was lost. And, and my thinking, obviously, we got to look at numbers, but one of the most important things we have to do is worry about the safety and health of, of everybody here in the county. But if, if right now, all, correct me if I make a mistake between you two, but if E-911 calls, mobile phones, all go to you, and then you send it over to dispatch in Washington, if it's a time where there's one person there or they're busy, there, there is time lapse and there can be more chances for mistakes.
Right.
And, and without a doubt, there had been.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're talking about not just financially, but if you're talking about the efficiency and the well-being of the citizens, particularly in the city of Washington, where most of the issue comes when you're transferring. I'm not going to say it's a no-brainer, but we have to do what's the right thing to do. That's, that's my selling point. And here again, I'm basing that not off of what, what I think, but talking to these two individuals, talking to fire people, talking to the dispatchers, everyone who was in on that meeting, asking questions of giving us examples of when things have gone wrong. And one person was specifically vocal about two or three instances where things did go wrong, and they were spinning their wheels, not knowing where to go, and the consequences of that. So, you know, if your loved ones laying out there on the highway in an accident, I don't think the additional funds, from the safety standpoint, is a great concern to me. Here again, I don't vote unless there's a tie, so that was my, my speech.
I would echo what Tony just said. I've talked to several people in EMS over the years, friends of mine, other people, and talked to them, and to a person. They will tell you that a combined dispatch will serve the people of Davis County, and by that, I mean the people who live in the city of Washington, because they also live in Davis County. It will serve everyone better, and unless we're going to be spending a tremendous amount of money more, on which we're not, and I think in time, like, I was on that committee until it kind of ground to a halt last year with everything going on. You know, to me, like Tony says, it's a no-brainer. It will serve people. I personally talked to families who've had loved ones in accidents out there in that gray area where they called the city, they called the county, and, oh, no, you got to talk to the city. You know, and it, it will, it will increase, improve reaction times and so forth, and I think it absolutely needs to be done.
Tony, you need a motion to approve this?
Yes.
I would make the motion that we approve the go-ahead plan for the central dispatch and get it implemented by the first next year.
I will second that motion. Motion by Mike, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thanks. Say that this has been easy, between meetings and meetings and emails and everything, has been a convoluted mess, but. You're what? Two, ten years? There you go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda, 2021 CF1 abatements, most likely the ones who didn't have the paperwork from the last time. Unless I combine them together like last time. Maysville Properties LLC, 1250 South 300 West. Estimated salaries, actual salaries.
Right here.
Maysville Properties LLC. As you can see, they're estimated on SB one schedule, seventeen employees, actual nineteen, Alex 556, actual seven oh five. Questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion. Motion by Dave, second by Mike Myers. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Next up, JBR Rentals, Jordan Russell, Division of Bell Tech. Obviously, this was on last time. Accountant didn't have all, all the information. And if you look at the SB one numbers, with COVID, I think that affected a lot of this, but nonetheless, still some very, very good numbers.
I'd make the motion to approve this abatement.
Motion by Mr. Sprinkle, second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign? Oh, just the two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Care's Act Relief Grant reimbursement, first of all, is the Health Department. As you can see, Mike Taylor has signed. Kelly's going to give us the rundown.
Uh, it's, it's a brief one. We had to purchase additional syringes and needles for our vaccine clinic. Uh, the, the needles that they had sent were, we felt, um, not for our patients, so they were free, but we did have to, we shouldn't, we had to order more, but we shouldn't have to do it many more times because we do have a significant amount of additional supplies and, and for COVID and COVID money coming. So, um, those grants have been received, I think, in the last week. Commissioners have seen it. It's about $68,000, so no more requests than that.
And school starches are going to be kind of programmed, how to get kids to?
Um, there's been a strong program from the state already, uh, through many portals, um, encouraging vaccinations and, and the Pfizer vaccine. The Health Department, um, is, has been vaccinating, uh, many young students already. So we'll have a strong relationship with the school, but the state handles a lot of those, those programmings to parents. I've gotten a few emails myself from the Department of Education. Those are, have been, have been great, proactive to work with. That's all I had. Any questions?
Questions, comments for Kelly?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
I'm going to approve.
Tom, second.
I'll second.
Mike Sprinkle, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Next up, Care's Relief Grant Request from Sheriff's Department.
Which ones are we talking about?
This is your additional appropriation for the forty-eight thousand, six hundred, the twenty-four. There's two different submissions.
One of those is, uh, twenty-three, six fifty. That is for a push-button system to be in this building, that building, down at Diane's. Already purchased a radio out for, out of E-911 funds. That's a, uh, safety issue. Right now, they don't have, uh, push buttons, but they can't, they gotta, the way it's set up for them right now is they got a little box on their computer. They push that and it calls the office next door. It doesn't, uh, call us directly. So this is what we had in that building. We always liked having that system over there. They push a button that says, uh, problem in the auditor's office. We know exactly where to go. So, uh, and then the other part of that, I've been kind of sitting back waiting to see what was going to happen with the construction of that building over there. I've attended one meeting. I can tell from that one meeting, it's going to be quite some time, so, uh, this is for a baggage scanner and a metal detector for the entrance of the courthouse. Has to be manned, so, and I've, I've got people to man it, to have it. I, I, I think this is a, uh, good system for, for over there. It will go into wherever we make, wherever we make it to go. So if that entrance changed, we can move it to another entrance. It's not going to be bolted down there and not moved, so.
Of the forty-eight, six, that's twenty-four, nine fifty of it, so.
Right.
Almost half. And we've, we've discussed this before.
The commissioners approved it last time.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Mike, second by Matt. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Next up, we have an ARPA request from the Town of Montgomery. We'll let these gentlemen talk, and then there was an ARPA meeting before, so we'll clue you in on some stuff.
Think I know most everybody on the board, sitting, maybe Mr. Schaefer there. Uh, I'm Mike Haley. I'm the president of the Town Board of Montgomery. Been in that position for way too long. It's one of these dubious honors at best. Think you all got a copy of a letter we sent, uh, July the sixth, which kind of lays out our, our case. Uh, we've been under an agreed order with the Indiana Department of Department of Management for a year or so. But we're going to have to do this work regardless, so we're trying to do it the most efficient and the least painless way for our, uh, our ratepayers. We're looking at a project of almost $5 million to kind of, we hopefully will finish us up and get us out from underneath this order to redo our three main lift stations and increase the capacity of them and do some changes out in our sewage lagoons, which will allow us to, it's kind of a, a covered process to where it'll allow them to constantly discharge rather than do it whenever the trick's up high enough, we can do it, so. We've applied to the state wa, uh, Water Infrastructure Fund for, for whatever we can get. It's kind, like the guy earlier, we don't know what, what they'll actually, uh, give us as far as a grant. So it's kind of up in the air about what our budget will be, that we need to raise. You know, there are ARPA funds available through the county and through the, we're going to put all our money towards it. Get a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. That'll all, probably what edit money we've got will go in there too. We'll put all the resources we can towards it, but if we get no grant for this, uh, we're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars for four thousand gallon sewage for our customers. Three hundred and thirty-nine customers per area. Right now, that rate is fifty-eight dollars and some change. I mean, we're willing to, to raise our rates, uh, probably to be the, probably be the highest around. I mean, we're looking at maybe eighty-five dollars for a rate. Help pay that down some, but, uh, we're looking for some, uh, we're not very good at begging, but, uh, we're, we're looking for some help from the county. We know there's, uh, quite a bit of, uh, ARPA funds out there, and if we could bail ourself to those, we'd, we'd appreciate whatever consideration you can give us, and if there's not enough, we'd, we'd, uh, we'd be willing to, if you'd be willing to finance us, we'd be willing to pay you back, you know?
All right. Well, I'll chime in here. We had an ARPA meeting before, which has three council members. Several individuals. What we, we're trying to make a list of how things should work and not work. And what we came up with rather quickly was because you needed answer either a soft commitment.
Yes.
One, one way or the other.
Right.
So one of the things we discussed was to do a ten percent maximum of the total cost, and then with that, we made a motion, give the Town of Montgomery $500,000 contingent upon the commissioner's approval, but you need a soft commitment letter, so that's something that we will have to discuss here. And Tom and Matt is on that committee, so we'll let them say what, what, what they're thinking as well, but you know, we're looking at housing, tourism, broadband, wastewater, uh, rural water, uh, lost revenue. There's a whole, obviously, everybody's coming to the well, but we do have some criteria Greg Jones is on there giving us what we can and cannot use the, these funds for. And obviously, water, wastewater, broadband is three of the highest things they emphasize.
And we look at this project also as economic development. I mean, it's, it's going to give us some capacity that we don't have, and I, I mean, I can't guarantee anything, but I would think there would be some individuals be willing to, um, do the housing development.
We, that was one of the items we discussed. I'll let these guys chime in, but that was one of the items.
Sure.
In addition to the, the monies that we're talking about, you do have the edit, edit funds that you can request also, which we discussed that pretty extensively this morning.
Okay.
And from the foundation.
Yeah, going to the Economic Foundation for some help as well.
Bet, I mean, the best outcome would be for us, uh, I think if we could get, you know, whatever we're getting in grant money is greatly, you know, greatly appreciated, but if there's some way we can finance this without having to float a bond or something, we can save a lot of soft costs, and we certainly like to do that. It'd help everybody involved.
I got a question. Um, the overhead mid-bridge po, project in Montgomery, what was, what's the county's commitment on that project? Are we going ahead with it? And, okay, what, how much money are we putting out on that?
So we have an agreement.
Same amount we are, right?
That's right. It's, we're fifty-fifty with the city. Um, but we are going to explore CCMG next spring. That's the plan, mini crossings, grant money for the construction. The upfront cost, the engineering, those sorts of things, right now is where we're getting billed at. Just a, you know, spoke with Tony about this, and just a rough idea, you know, we're looking at two point one million dollar total, probably around a million construction. So, you know, if we did an eighty-twenty, I'm sorry, seventy-five, twenty-five on the CCMG funding, then you're around, what, two hundred and fifty thousand? Split two ways, so.
That's better than I thought. I thought we'd be in the two hundred thousand.
Well, 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 so we will, but with the, when you figure in the soft cost, yeah, my guess is probably going to be more than that, two, two fifty.
Yeah.
Two fifty. Somewhere in that neighborhood, but.
Now, we were thinking.
CSX is coming to the plate too with a couple hundred thousand dollars, so we're, we're tapping every well we can tap to, to keep the cost down for the.
So, so the county's portion would be three fifty?
Yeah.
And then how much on the, uh, nine hundred extension through Odin? What, do we commit three quarters of a million to that?
We did.
And the timeframe on it's like five years out?
It's not been awarded, so they'll have to go back on the next call, which will be for 2026. He would start development before that, but.
And the, uh, Hill Ridge Bridge project, we're looking at next year, twenty?
That's the plan, yeah.
Twenty-two?
We just got a contract with CSX. They, they make us get a contract with them to pay their consulting engineer to review our consulting engineer's plans, so.
Nice guys.
Boy.
Yeah, and there's no choice. You have to do it, so we just, just to get that three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Nothing like everybody getting a cut out of a project.
That's true.
The, the good news is they did commit a couple hundred thousand, which will probably about co, cover their cost.
Right.
What we're going to pay them back, but.
So are there other communities that we know of that are looking at similar projects that we're not, I mean, you know, Phil?
I, I have not.
It's going to take county, county commitment to own a match or something?
Well, El, El Nora, if, if they was to do anything at that exchange up there in Odin, El Nora, then they have to get sewage out there to the, sewer and water out there. Water's not a problem, I don't think. So that's, that's something they would like to get help on, is to get.
I think there's some water issues in Odin too. I just got a notice that the rate was going up. I think every, all the municipalities, I think, have issues with, in one way or another.
And the, the, uh, ARPA money that we're getting in the county is three million this year and three?
Three point two.
Three point two this year.
Three point two next.
We've already got it.
At three point two next year.
We've already got to three point two.
Right.
And three point two next year.
And that's part of the, you know, the committee's, your decision in breaking that down, Mike, is we know there's going to be a lot of people coming to the well, and we want to be able to help as many people as possible, but you know, we're still forming those guidelines, and one of them was that ten percent total match, you know, just to help them out, you know, but we know there's going to be a lot of people coming to the well, so.
And we've got one payment left to the city of Washington.
Right. Right. Out of edit on it. My, my, uh, my question is that, um, do we know for sure, um, what the different things that we can spend that ARPA money on? I mean, is our courthouse remodel, could that be part of it? No, yes, no?
Some of it's still a little fuzzy, but that would be a no.
That's a no.
Well, maybe the initial funds that we got, the first funds that we got.
There's a lot of information and I can send some emails to the council on questions and answers pertaining to that as far as restricted uses and suggested uses. So that's changing somewhat and Greg alluded to that in our meeting this morning. They rolled out the program and now we're in that window where they're kind of nailing down the exact uses. So while we don't know 100% for sure what we can and cannot, we have some general guidelines that we can operate under. Which, as Tony mentioned, infrastructure, water, those things are definitely allowed. Some of those other things are outside of that we're looking at and we'll try to get more concrete evidence of the uses and the restrictions and the reporting, which is a key part in all of this.
Tony, didn't you said on a committee that they were putting together a wish list for these funds?
That's what this committee is.
Okay. And where are we at on the wish list?
As far as the original list, it had like 25 items or something, Brian to help scale that down to about five.
Yeah.
We really didn't get into that list per se. We, what we got into is what items we think being housing, tourism, broadband. There's some water issues that people were discussing. Were able to use a calculation of lost revenue, which we really didn't have much of a lost revenue, but using their projections, we can, we can take some of this money for that and basically piggybank it. And then it still has to be earmarked for things, but we can actually stick it back and use it for these projects as they come forward. So we are going to work to try and get that number and save that money because obviously you have until 2024.
2024 to commit and then 2026 to pay.
2024 to commit and 2026 to spend it. So everybody rushing to the well, we don't want to
We don't want to do that.
run the well dry right off the bat. So that's the intent, is to try and get that number and put that money back into piggybank.
I, you got a good project, don't get me wrong, it's a great project, but I'd kind of like to know what's left in the wish list that, and amounts that are needed to go toward these other projects. I mean, this $500,000 is, is almost 20% of what we're gonna get this year. Yeah, it's 10% of the overall monies we're gonna get. But I don't know what the, what's left on the wish list, so. It's, I know time is the essence for you folks, but I'd kind of like to have a clearer picture, you know, what the other items are that, you know, we may be looking at, so.
Mike, we currently, like this morning, I presented some requests that have come across my desk. On that committee we're looking at, we know that this is just the beginning of the request.
Right.
So to your point on that, knowing what's all out there, that's part of the reason the committee was making those recommendations, is trying to be conservative and establish some procedures and guidelines so that we can have full transparency. And then from the committee, they're just making a recommendation to boards and of course the boards have the full authority, but it was the reason time issue on this one.
I don't think those, that wish list is fully defined. You know what I mean? So it's floating out there. It was just an original, hey, here's some money, here's where we can put them to. That's changing all the time based on criteria.
Most of it don't apply at all to it.
This is just, you know, and actually, it's so, it's so much floating, we just thought we'd make the recommendation for the Town of Montgomery because we know that's something they need.
We've got a project that's almost show ready to get going on.
Everything else is gonna be gone over and, yeah.
If it wouldn't be for their time element.
Yeah, they gotta have that in tomorrow, is that right?
It's all right, we've already submitted the application.
Okay, yeah. And so they needed matching, you know, at least a verbal, you know, like a, that we have intent.
It's gonna happen in some way, shape or form.
Yeah.
Any other information you need from us?
I don't think so. I mean, we know what the total cost is, we've looked at what your rates are gonna go to. If nothing happens from 58.48 to roughly 150 a month, I don't think anybody can-
I won't be representing Montgomery anymore. I can finally get somebody madmiffed once.
Might run you out of town.
Ah, well, that's the way it goes.
Those are good questions, Mike, real good questions.
Well, it's, I know that there's gonna be a lot more requests coming.
It's gonna be a lot.
There's gonna be a lot.
That's why we got in early.
There may be
Davis County.
projects coming and there, there's gonna be worse projects coming, but it appears to me that this one's ready to go, so. Just keep that in mind as we think about the funds we have left coming up and the projects that we review.
That's, we did. Obviously, we know that, we know the time element of this, which is why we're trying to get, look at the revenue side so we can stick some of that back. We're all, we're gonna get hit in the bucket, the well's gonna be dry before we get started.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, even if we make the, you know, this is, you know, we say we want to go forward, it's still up to the commissioners to move it from there, you know what I mean? But we at least they can have, you know, a verbal that we want to go forward with.
There you go. So with that said, we're either looking for recommendations for one thing or another. But the request was a million two and we said a max 10%, so that's 495. We rounded it to 500, so the request is a half a million dollars. Motions?
I'll move that we go ahead and allocate a half million dollars to the Town of Montgomery Sewer Project, pending the commissioner's approval.
Pending commissioner's approval. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by
Second.
Dave Smith, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
We're gonna, before we talk about the remote meeting policy, we're gonna do something else here. I think Phil, Chris, may you get up and talk for a second? Don't you have something to say as of yesterday?
Oh, okay. I've turned in my resignation, 32 and a half years. Been a pleasure. This decision was made based upon financial needs for me and my family. I can draw my full pension and still work another full-time job, so that's my plan. I want to work at least another 10 years in industry, so. Got a position that I'll be accepting and moving forward with, but been nothing short of a miracle for me to, to work in this place this long. I mean, it's things that I've got to see and the people I've got to talk to and impact, it's been a real blessing. You guys, you know, we serve in different roles, but I can honestly say the council's always been really good to us. At the Highway Department, I appreciate that, appreciate each one of you, what you, what you bring to the table. I look, I'm looking forward to continuing to serve in just in a different capacity, so. Hopefully, I, my knowledge that I've garnered while I'm here, I'll be able to share that with other counties as I move around, do what I'm gonna be doing. Hopefully, be able to help other people, so. That's really what I enjoy the most is, is being able to help people. See communities grow and have positive things, so.
From our standpoint, we thank you for your many years of service. Thank you for all that you've done on the roads and bridges and everything else.
You know, obviously, I mean, we're getting ready to ask for an additional for Canterbury Road here, but that's, that's been a big, big part of community here the last 10 years. Thing going on up there, that's been exciting for us. Mike Grant asked me, you know, you know, the thing is that you've been involved in, what's, what's your, what stands out? And I'm like, well, obviously Canterbury Road, but just dealing with people. I, hopefully people have found me to be fair, I can't, you know, we can't always say yes as you guys can, you know, we're limited fiscally by what we can and can't do. But always tried to bear to people and-
I want to, I want to commend you for that, Phil. I mean, from a business, when I worked at Purdue there, you always balanced the county and, and and what you could do for the businesses locally and did outstanding jobs as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you in the past.
Thank you, thank you, that was my goal. That's what, you know, from, from the biggest business in the county down to the, to the person that, you know, you know, the demographics we serve is, is broad, so we try to be fair with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for all your service to the county, Phil, you've really done a tremendous job for us. You're leaving awfully big shoes to fill, I know that. All the shoes that you wear, but they're bigger. Bigger than that, I guarantee you.
Well, that's, that's the other side of the coin, you know, at 32 and a half years, I feel like I own the place, but I don't. So I, you know, I've, I've told Chris and the commissioners, I'm telling you guys the same thing. I don't want to leave a void that, you know, if there's knowledge that I have, my phone is always open to any of you, I'd be happy to answer those calls and talk to people or go back out and spend time. I don't want to see any kind of failures because I'm leaving, that's not, that's not who I am. I don't want, I don't want to do that.
I don't think you can leave until you get 200 done. You've been working on that forever.
I've been telling somebody that. We, we should have it chipped and sealed hopefully next week is what we're kind of, the rain, the rains kind of delayed us, but obviously there's still-
That's gonna be great. I appreciate everything you've done, you've saved the county a lot of money over the years.
Well, if he's here to the end of the month, he'll have that done before he's-
Yeah, well, I've got some other chuckles I need to tell him about. I need Chris's number now, I can-
It's unlisted.
I really do appreciate everything, thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil, for-
All right, next up, remote meeting policy is the commissioners have approved and it was tabled? Well, then we'll table it as well.
That's my, that's also my recommendation due to some of the language that we talked about yesterday and the capabilities, Grant can speak to that.
They want to have a remote meeting policy, but they want to clarify that it's merely for their membership, up to 50%. Pretend it may take additional software, hardware, and they don't necessarily want members of the public participate electronically. So this would only be about the membership. We've got a bunch of draft policies. It would be worthwhile, at least to me, to hear what your wishes are. If you do want such a policy, I heard in the email, a number of you did, just with travel and business and whatnot, but it would be good to hear your wishes. We can break them into two policies. Right now, it's just a county policy for the commissioners and the council, but certainly we want to ask for your wishes and try to meet those.
Obviously, post, well, not post-COVID, we're still in COVID, but there's times where we all can't be here to be able to actually vote and speak and I think would be a good thing and I would be for it. Each can say what they think and then we'll have to wait for the commissioners and then we'll get with the official recommendation and go inside with us, but I'm personally not for it.
And this is a nice option to have, for sure.
I think COVID has shown that it can be done, you know, we never considered it before a year ago, but it's shown that we've got the technology now and we can't do it, it's just a matter of coming out with the right policy.
All right. So from that standpoint, we're in favor. We'll wait till commissioners and then we'll go from there. Next on the agenda, Attorney General Office Representative Kim Harris would like to speak to us for a little bit. How are you today? Good.
Well, my name is Kim Harris and I am from the Office of the Attorney General, Tadorkita. I just wanted to stop in and actually, I'm glad I did because I met the gentleman that spoke first and I'm gonna see what I can do to help. But the Attorney General's Office is actually a very interesting office to work in, if you don't know much about it. Like I did when I first started, it is really, really interesting. So many levels, so many different divisions there, you know, anything from the Advisory Division, Consumer Protection, and then the Unclaimed Property, which we are giving rightful owners back a million dollars a week, which I think is phenomenal. I was listening to a story this morning. There was a man that went to a church up north and he was owed $180,000 and it was on unclaimed property, so I thought that was pretty, pretty interesting. Our Unclaimed Property Division in Greenwood holds all of very unique items, baseball cards, gold coins, I just, I find all that to be very interesting. I'm gonna leave a card for you guys today, so if you have any questions, issues, concerns, anything I can help you with. And also, I am going to leave some copies of the Parents' Bill of Rights. I don't know if you've been following that in the, in the news. But the Attorney General created it to serve as a public resource, so parents are aware of their rights. So I am gonna leave a few of those with you today. But if I can be of service to you, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. And again, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, additional appropriations. County Journal 900 match monies, share for repair and maintenance, $15,000. Not done yet, are you, Phil?
Just like a bad penny, I'm back. So I'm not exactly sure, obviously, we made an error when we were calculating our budget last year. So we ended up that we're gonna be short our match monies for Canterbury Road. Most of this is cash flow issue. So that, you know, there's only, only, only $258,406 of that request, that is actual county money. The rest of it will just be necessary in order for us to pay the bills. Basically, we have a 30 to 45 day window of turnaround to get our 80% federal dollars back from NDOT on the project. So the commissioners, we pay the bill, we have to have the canceled check back that shows we paid the bill. Once we have that, we submit LPA vouchers to NDOT. They cut us the check for 80% of the expended, expended monies.
Yes, it goes back to County General.
Okay. So, so that's, that's the request. And it's, it's for, basically, the big chunk of that's for Rural Water and RMC utility relocation up there on the project. And that's something I'll mention just briefly, you know, that's kind of a hidden gem in all this. So these, both these utilities chose to do betterment, which they pay out of pocket. But like we're going from an eight inch water line to a 12 inch water line for Rural Water, so it gives more capacity on the system up there. And then the other thing too, there was a big portion of the south piece that did not have three-phase power. So RMC went ahead and upgraded their lines to facilitate businesses that would want to hook up to three-phase power. A lot of people don't understand that part of the project, that, you know, these, both of them were on private easement. RMC not all the way, but Rural Water for sure was. So they, they, they get reimbursed for moving their line out of the, out of the corridor. And 80% of that's federal money, obviously 20% is county. But it is, it is large sums of money, but at the end of the day, we end up with better facilities to facilitate growth in the area moving forward, so.
So three phases, all the way up and down 900 now?
It is. Just, you, you want to, want me to give a brief where we're at on the project or?
Yeah, I'll be fine.
So right now, we're in, working between 100 and 200, they are calling that Phase One of, of the Phase Four Corridor. And they replaced a box culvert near All Saints Church this past week. It's now back open where local traffic can still get through. And then the, the plan is the 26th of this month, we're gonna tear the bridge out over Flat Creek. So there'll be a 90-day closure on that. They actually, that's gonna be a three-sided box culvert. We chose that design over the exposed- They actually, um, that's gonna be a three-sided box culvert. We chose that design over the, the exposed bridge deck like we have now. Essentially, so that we end up with the same type of pavement surface in the buggy lane. Um, we're seeing, already seeing deterioration from the horse's hooves on the bridge at River Post over on the concrete deck. So by, by doing, putting this buried structure in that eliminates that, uh, we'll be able to repair it with local forces. Utilities, RMC is almost finished. I believe that ElectraCom will be out of there this week, and RMC themselves are gonna do the tie-ins for some of the residents. For the, uh, tie back into the new line. Rural Water still has Van Hoy up there doing their utility relocation. I believe they're between two, between three hundred and four hundred right now. They have the new line activated between one hundred and two hundred, so that those, those services have all been tied back in, and. The old line actually has been ripped out in some spots where the, where Milestone's been working on the undercuts. Uh, the soil in Davies County likes to hold onto water, so almost all those side ditches, in order to expand the road out. They, they get undercut anywhere from eighteen inches to four feet, depending on how bad the soil is underneath. And then most of it's getting treated with like a GeoGrid, uh, GeoTextile reinforcement, layer twos and then fifty-threes on top. Eventually, they put soil back on top of that, and they'll soil, cement stabilize that, and then that's what your asphalt, what the buggy lane sits on. Uh, Milestone's goal this year, um, two hundred north intersection, Dave, you asked about that. So once this ninety-day closure's over at the bridge, they're gonna move right into closing that intersection. It gets raised up about five feet. So, um, then that will be in the latter part of the season. Hopefully, we get some drier weather than what we've been getting because they have to dry that dirt and compact it. But that raises nine hundred five feet, so that the, the profiles that we have going up hills in each direction right now, uh, make those more gentle for sight view and for people being able to stop at nine hundred. Um, but the goal, uh, Milestone's goal is to have all the concrete laid between one hundred and two hundred this fall. So we should, we should be driving on the new road in that area by the end of the year, and then that'll just leave them from two hundred north, north, to complete next year. Could potentially be some pipe replacements in the, in the winter months north of two hundred north, but. Would just be like, uh, closed for a few days or whatever in those areas. They have to facilitate the businesses and residents being able to get in and out on each end, so. They're pretty, pretty careful. And one thing I'll, I'll mention, too, we, we did get the WTH ThinkMap. You guys are probably used to looking at it online to see par, parcels. But we're now posting all of our road closures on, on there, so anytime somebody questions you about, uh, a road being closed, you can get on there and click on that. And there's probably a brief description of what's going on and why it's closed on the map, and it's, it's accurate. Now, we, we put, we put those little barricades exactly where the closure's at, so there's no question if somebody can get to their house or. EMS can get around or whatever. The firefighters will be able to hold up and look at it as well.
Yeah, that's a good deal. I used that the other day.
We're excited about that. I was gonna ask, Kelly stepped out, but I was gonna ask Kelly if there's a way that can be tied into like Google Maps. Where somebody that, you know, would Google, uh, road, road closures in Davies County, Indiana, or something that, that they could, we see a lot of trucking companies come from out of, out of town. Saw, saw them last night going through the construction zone. I'm like, why in the world did they go that way? If they had, if there was a way for them to easily see that it was closed, I think they would've, would choose to go around.
Any other questions for the, those appropriation?
I guess I'd, eh, so the actual shortfall you're saying for that request is about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion, we approve this.
Motion by Dave.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Sprinkle, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Same sign? Thank you.
Bill? Thank you.
That was on the million two?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand for the sheriff?
I actually have another one down there to a transfer.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, eighty thousand from nine hundred East Reconstruction to Dust Control. And basically, we've had a banner year for Dust Control. Fifty, fifty spots that are getting chipped sealed, um, which we've never had that many before. I don't know if, I don't know what's driving it, but, uh. Kind of unusual. Had a, we had a large amount of budget, I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand maybe in Dust Control already. Uh, we're asking for an eighty thousand dollar additional, and it's just that we've done that many this year. It's been kinda crazy.
That's on the cost share?
It, it is, yeah. They, that's, that's strictly, the residents pay the cost of material. We're providing the labor, and then like if, um. For instance, the ones that we know we're gonna chip and seal, we go in and add, we add three to four inches of fifty-threes. Try to, we're, we're trying to make them last for them, so we don't have to go back year after year after year. But yes, that's strictly what they're gonna be reimbursing us for the cost of the sand and the oil and chips.
Make a motion to approve that one also.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second. Mike Myers, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now your security center, fifteen grand, Gary.
Hi, uh, washing machines. We've got two washing machines in the basement. Uh, they were put there when the building was constructed. Taken. They're, they've seen us days. Uh, they run pretty much all the time, so, uh, that's what that's for. I, I've used a lot of my repair and maintenance gear. I'm, fix the roof. Our ice machine took a. Went south on us last week, so I've had to get another one of those. Uh, but that's what this is for, is for two new washing machines.
How's your dryer?
Dryer's all right for now.
Day's not over.
Day's not over, right?
Motion approved by.
Second.
Tom, second by Mike. Mr. Sprinkle, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Public health? Patiently waiting?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, uh, this is, uh, a grant that we received. It's called the Indiana Trust Grant, and, uh, I apparently forgot to submit the appropriation last year when the budget came through. So this is to help, uh, offset the cost of our, uh, public health nurse number two. Um, so it was approved in the budget. I just, I didn't get the paperwork submitted in January. Yes, COVID was on my plate.
So you're saying you've been busy?
Just a little bit. Uh, yeah.
Both, both to approve.
Approved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Matt, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
So, general update? How are things?
General update? Uh, today, we'll be back in the blue. We're still seeing, I think I saw five new cases this morning. We are seeing, um, the variant, the B-117. Uh, several, several of the new cases are the B-117. Which is the alpha variant. Uh, so we are watching those. Uh, it is sort of interesting from a nursing standpoint to go back and investigate the cases. To see if they're vaccinated, if they've had COVID before. Uh, so far in my investigation, two of the people had been vaccinated, uh, prior to getting the alpha variant. One of them was still in the, to be considered fully vaccinated, you had to be two weeks post. This person was just a week post. Um, and then the other one was fully vaccinated and had had COVID previously. So, we continue to learn a lot about COVID. It's just very mysterious. I mean, just about the time you think you might understand it, it throws you a curveball. Uh, we are vaccinating twelve and up. We have all three vaccines, Moderna, Pfizer, and J&amp;J. Um, we're staying busy with vaccinations. And we still have a very low vaccination rate for Davies County. Um, we're continuing to reach out, uh, to businesses, uh, people who can't get to the health department. We do a homebound agency, and we go into the homes. Um, we continue to work with the schools. Um, I hate to say it, but I, I think we're at the point in the county where anyone who wants to be vaccinated has been vaccinated. I think once it becomes FDA-approved, we might see an increase in that, but right now, I think we've pretty much gotten all of those who want, unless they just turn a certain age to where they can, you know, receive it, uh, but.
The one that you had scheduled and canceled, it was just for lack of interest, or what, what?
Uh, the, the Canterbury Clinic or the Odin Clinic that we had scheduled, um, it was canceled by the bishops.
Lack of interest then, I guess.
So, uh, we are returning next week. Next Tuesday will be our first. Um, prior to COVID, we go out to Odin and Canterbury twice a month, and they're very successful, um, childhood clinics. And so we do those, and so next Tuesday will be the first time we're going back. Um, we've had hundreds of phone calls asking us when we're coming back for the kids, so. Now that the numbers are lower and we have approval from the state and from, uh, our health officer to go back into the community out there, and so we start those next Tuesday. Uh, we are receiving lots and lots of grants. I think we're up to seven now, which consumes the days. Uh, people say, great, you got a grant, and then the recording and tracking is a nightmare. Um, so we're working with those. Uh, hopefully, we'll be able to use those funds to continue to grow our off-site clinics and to get, you know, vaccine out into populations that. Maybe can't get to Washington or can't get to our Odin Canterbury clinics. We're really trying hard to push, um, to keep the efforts moving and even expand a little bit. If you have any ideas about how to get more people interested in vaccination, I think once it's FDA-approved, I think we will see more of an interest.
Free dinners usually get farmers out.
You said five new cases. That's five new positive?
Five new positive cases, um, I received this morning when I checked.
And that would be for just this week?
Just for, uh, yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, just for yesterday. Um, prior to yesterday, most of ours were related to, uh, families, so they were getting everyone in the family tested. And so we were seeing families of four to seven all test positive, but the last couple of days, I'm starting to see it, um, mainly spread throughout the county, not so much individual entire households. Yeah. So with the guidance, um, if you're fully vaccinated and you're exposed to someone, let's say, he comes down with COVID and you've been sitting next to him, if you're fully vaccinated, you do not have to quarantine. Um, because of the protection rate that you have. So that's a plus for those that are fully vaccinated, not having to be quarantined. But the variants, we're learning about every day.
Have we had the Delta variant show up here? Have you seen?
I have a two, but they have not been confirmed yet at the state level. It takes a little bit. Once someone tests positive on a normal test, then that test has to be sent for the variant testing. So it takes a little bit before I get back, but I have a couple that probably will be, okay. I think Delta cases make it like twenty-five percent of the state's positive cases currently. So it's, it's out there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's two, but they're, they're separate, separate things.
Okay.
Okay. Motion approved on the public health nurse was two, twenty thousand, one fifty-two sixty-six, as well as the reimbursement for the vaccines of eight oh five ninety. Approved by, approved by Mike.
Yep.
Second Tom, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And the next one, the eight oh five ninety is actually, one is for the reimbursements, and the other one is for rainy day supplies. So.
Go move.
Go move by Mike.
Second.
Second Tom, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Now we're down to the sheriff equipment of forty-eight six. Where do I do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. We got it earlier.
Done earlier. We did the transfer, so everything else we have in the packet is for informational purposes. We have the joint board, aviation from there. And RDCI TIF notice. Any other old business, new business, anything? How about you? You're, you're worn out and you're good, huh? I guess we just need one more motion.
Moves.
Second by Tom, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And there's plenty to sign, so don't run away.
Okay, thanks.
Can we just sign on our left, little eye pump thing?
Have to ask Mr. Matt about that one.
Later, maybe.
Later, maybe. We need to get one of these, just stick this thing in there.
I got it. I need to.
Thanks. Give it to you.